So it's 7:01 on Tuesday, April 2nd. I'm calling the, I think we have a quorum. Will, Robert, right, Will? No. We have quorum. Is Rob here?
Yeah, I'm here. Will, Rob.
Sorry, hi. Scaring right at you. All right. Um, so we do have a quorum with three of us present. Um, so calling the meeting to order, roll call vote for, planning board meeting on Tuesday, April 2nd. Addie May Weiss, I, Will Denham.
Aye.
And Robert Wolf.
Aye.
And we are missing Frank Hope.
He just joined.
Okay. Frank, we are just doing roll call vote to proceed with opening the planning board meeting. So you can just say aye that you're here.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Um, I'll just quickly read off the agenda. The, um, we'll, we'll start with reviewing minutes from March 19th. Then under hearings, we have no hearings scheduled for tonight. Current planning board business, uh, we'll do an update on affordable housing by law, the solar by law, the battery energy storage system. Um, kind of an update that was put on the agenda. The multifamily 3A overlay by law update and any other business, um, not anticipated and, uh, communications with other boards. So, um, for, um, I guess right now, Heidi, we, um, have at the start. Can we move, is everyone okay if we move the items done anticipated to after we do the minutes? Can we start with minutes and get those put to bed? Is that okay? Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of March 19th?
I have.
You want to approve the agendas presented?
Yes, is everyone okay? Can we approve the agendas presented? Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Um, I guess being Zoom, we roll call vote. Addie May Weiss, I, Robert Wolf.
Aye.
Will Denham. She froze. Frank Hope.
Aye.
And Will. I think, I think, I think Will isn't, I. Limits of technology. So.
You give me aye.
Thumbs up works. All right, for what we're doing this, um, all right. So starting with the minutes, March 19th minutes. Um, any amendments, changes, concerns about the minutes as presented?
I move accept the minutes as presented.
Okay. Moved a second.
Okay.
Second by Rob. All right, all of those in favor of approving the minutes from March 19th? Um, is there any further, further discussion? Don't believe so. No, okay. So approving the minutes from March 19th. Addie May Weiss is aye. Rob Wolf.
Aye.
Will Denham.
Aye.
Frank Hope.
Aye.
Thank you. So minutes are approved from March 19th. Thank you again, Steph, for your meticulous minutes. Um, so the update on the affordable housing by law, there's no further update since the last meeting. Um, I know that several of you have reached out to a sit offer to be my audience, to, uh, let me, um, kind of run the script by you before the town meeting. Um, I haven't gotten it written, but I have every intention of writing it this week. Thanks to Marion Neutro's suggestion. And so Marion and, um, Andy Goodall were first to, uh, offer their audience and feedback services. So, um, I will be reaching out to you each in the next week to kind of run through my script and get any feedback. And if anyone has anything, I know we talked at the last meeting about some concerns for, um, just being aware that the audience at town meeting is a different audience than the advisory hearing. Given that advisory and select board have already heard a number of these issues. And for some at town meeting, this is the first time that they're hearing of some of these issues. So we will, uh, I will script accordingly. Um, but other than that, there is no further update on that article. The next.
Any comments you have from people? Okay.
Okay. Um, the next item on the agenda, we, um, we were given a deadline, um, back, I believe in January, that we would hear something by April 2nd. And today being April 2nd, at 5 o'clock or after 5 o'clock, we did get, or Heidi, um, via the town clerk, did receive a response from the attorney general's office. We have not had a chance to digest this letter or fully read it. Um, I believe Heidi will be sharing that with each of you so that we all may read it and understand what's being said in preparation for the next meeting, when it'll likely be on our agenda to discuss further. Heidi, do you have any other comments on that?
No, I did just get the email out. I came into the office here and got that sent out. So I think next agenda item and after we talk to town council.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay. All right, so moving on. So that's it for solar by law update. Um, I know we had given Frank Hope some homework back last fall to talk about battery energy storage systems. And, um, then we were, it was on our discussion for kind of further looking into this for future knowledge. Frank, um, Heidi, do you have any background on that?
Yeah, so I attended the citizens planning, training collaborative talk, um, at Holy Cross, and one of the talks had been on battery energy storage systems and solar systems. And just some of the difference between a solar system versus a standalone battery energy system. And a lot of the concerns came up were some environmental concerns. Because in town, we had had a hybrid car battery fire. So it was a lithium fire and it was just a car battery. But, um, it was $10,000 to $11,000, I think, to decontaminate the firefighters' equipment and apparel after fighting this fire. And I believe the car had been packed in sand and was still smoking after five days. It's a very different type of fire to combat. And, um, concern I would have is if we have a big battery energy storage system, what if there's a leak? What is their fire? There's things I would, would hope we should research and see. Should there be some type of impervious surface that's available to be putting down or platform for these to stand on? Um, I think it's a concern from other planners, what I'm hearing as well. So I kind of wanted to bring it back. And then when I found out about Frank having done some research on it in the fall before I started, it might be good to be proactive, look into things and try and create some good zoning that would help protect our groundwater as well as allow the solar energy. Cause right now it looks like they will be allowing battery storage as a right as well. So I was going to bring it out to see if there's any interest in researching following up on this and putting it on, uh, future radar here.
So I don't know if, if, uh, those who were at present at that presentation, remember what the presentation is about. Um, if now you want me to kind of go through some of the highlights of it or whether you, um, want to do this at a future meeting. Um, I think really the, the biggest aspect of, uh, research that I was to look into, uh, post that fall meeting was, uh, the potential, um, revenues, uh, to the community, to the, to, to the town and in the way of, uh, taxes and how, uh, a neighboring community is handling that situation who does have a large, um, battery energy, um, uh, system in their, uh, um, in their town are dealing with it. I have not gone to, to that, uh, yet. I still need to do that, but, um, I do have the, uh, the presentation. Should you want to either look at any components of it or quick overview of it or what you would like me to do at this point?
Um, I don't know. Heidi, what do you think? Are we, is tonight the night that we want to review this? Or do we want to be thinking about, I know Frank did do some homework on it and had a presentation. I'll be honest, it's been a while since I've looked at it. And, um, I do think that it's something that is a planning board. Um, I believe Frank, you made a suggestion that we have kind of some, um, think about some goals and objection, objectives as a planning board and the direction that we, the things that kind of we seem to keep fighting fires. And, um, I think this is one of those that is that long-term goal and kind of goes to the broader issue of having as a board some kind of like what, looking ahead to the future as well as, um, managing just the things that come up throughout the year. Um, but I don't know, tonight, the night to go into, to re-review and see what the issues are and what the benefits are? Or what are your thoughts, Heidi?
If, if Frank can do a, a quick overview, I think that would be great. He had some good slides, um, and it just might help people to refresh what we're talking about.
Frank.
I don't think it's got to be long with explanation, but I think that there were some key slides you might have, Frank.
So I'll, I'll whiz over them. And, uh, from that, uh, certainly feel free to ask any questions and I'll answer from what I can remember. Um, I just need to move all this garbage out of the way so I can get to the right page. Uh, can you see that?
Yes.
Um, do a slideshow, make it a little bigger. So, basically, um, the whole idea with battery energy storage systems is to take, uh, voltage from whatever the primary, uh, sources of creating energy are. Uh, solar, wind, electric, any type of electrical energy just happens to be showing nuclear, it could also be any other type. And taking it in, uh, storing that energy. Cause it's, it's, it's hard to create, uh, energy always when it is needed. Um, and the battery storage, energy storage system, BES, could be a, a secondary source of voltage, supplying the need, the, the customers that need the voltage. Homes, industry, um, transportation and just the, the power line and the net, the network. Um, the, the optimal times of producing isn't always in line with the times of the need of electricity. And battery energy storage systems provide that buffer between the, uh, the times where, uh, energy is at a maximum or at a lull and, um, can, can step in to provide or store the excess at the times when that, that, that energy that's being produced is not needed. Uh, it does not have to only be with solar, uh, array systems, which is what this is indicating. But, uh, certainly this is what is in the, uh, in the bylaw for the, um, large scale solar and battery backup for that. So that would possibly be one of the first options or the first places where we might see it, though it doesn't have to be. Um, introduction of battery energy storage. I think I mentioned all these points. So basically what this is trying to show is that there are peaks and troughs and that a battery storage, energy storage system can level out the peaks and troughs. Uh, especially during high peak times when there could be brownouts and blackouts. So that's the benefit of battery, battery energy storage systems. This slide shows the, uh, the various different types. And there's a wide variety of them. Um, bear with me, I just need to move this thing out here. Uh, I'm not going to go into all of them, but you can see that there's one, two, three, four, five different categories of energy storage systems from mechanical, electrochemical, all the way to hydrogen-based storage, uh, systems. And within those, there are several different types within each of them. And depending on what kind of a system a vendor would want to, uh, implement in a, in large-scale battery energy storage system in Sherborne, uh, could be any one of these. So then one of the questions could be is, uh, what are the advantages and disadvantages of each of them? Which ones would be most likely that they would be wanting to use? And, you know, as Heidi mentioned, which is really the key point, which I go into later, which is then the disadvantages and the drawbacks of battery energy storage. You know, um, what, what types of, um, safety protocols? What dangers can they offer? And how do we deal with those dangers? Uh, so sorry about that. Keep using arrow. Hello. All right. Um, there are, uh, significant, um, grants and incentives for going to battery energy storage. Um, our energy network system needs it. And then, and there's a huge increase in demand for electric, electricity, electrification. And there's not necessarily the supply yet to, um, to meet that demand. Though we are trying, our nation is trying to increase the electrification through wind, solar and, uh, other forms of, uh, green energy. I, I think you've also seen in the, um, in the papers and in the news that we're maybe starting to look at again at nuclear, uh, different forms of nuclear than what we had in the past. As well as, uh, there's been some talk about fusion, um, or fusion, fusion as well as a benefit. Um, so that could be a potential, but that's 10, 15, 20 years away, even if it started to look promising now. But with that said, still there are incentives for battery systems to provide that capacity. Uh, where there is, with, when there's no less need to the point where there is needing to be that, that's a source of energy. This is a slide that shows our increase in energy needs just in the state of Massachusetts. Um, this is, uh, the, uh, chart that shows what the battery storage demand is looking like in the next 10 years, eight years in this case. So it's, it's becoming large. So I think the point of these slides were to make the case that there are companies and organizations out there that want to start taking advantage of the incentives and want to start meeting these, these needs and demands. And hence, uh, these systems are probably going to start to come into place. All right, here I just talked about different systems and where they could be located and so on. Um, so would, there's a rapid increase in growth in, in them. Um, some potential reasons why, uh, developers would want to, uh, put them in. There's a lot of, uh, places for, um, revenues to be generated for these battery energy storage systems. So they are coming. This is, uh, a look of one of the systems. This is a Tesla lithium, um, lithium ion-based battery system that is in Antucket. Medway, which is the town I was speaking of earlier, that's adjacent to our near to us, nearby community. They're looking at putting in 140 Tesla mega pack units. Um, 70 transformers, a pretty big system. Uh, with that, it's a lithium-based. So in terms of the, 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 the safety aspects, there's certainly with lithium, the, the, the risk of heat and heat generation and overheating. Um, the, the problem with that is that they, they, they are really great until they do heat up so much that they do end up catching fire. But when you look at these, um, the housing that they're in, they're designed to provide a lot of cooling. Yet the housing itself is designed to withstand, um, any type of fire explosion that occurs with, within the, the containers. So they should not be a cascading effect of explosions. Should something happen and possibly could be isolated to any one of these containers or boxes? Um, and not necessarily be a domino and one light set off the other, set off the other. Uh, the Medway locations parcel is 10.6 acres, which is not all that, um, very large. Um, it's sound attenuation barriers about 22 feet tall. Security fencing is about eight feet tall, uh, with agitation buffers. And, you know, there's driveways going in and out with vehicles going in and out, monitoring and, um, checking on, on the systems. This is a picture of the, uh, the Medway, what the Medway plant should look like. This is a artist, um, conceptual, um, rendition of what the final lot will look like. And they're in production of this now in Medway. Uh, I looked at, um, Sherborne to see where likely, if one were to be placed someplace where could be placed in Sherborne. And this is, uh, it could be in other places, but this is the, the first place that I was thinking about because this is where we have a, um, a, a substation. And in the substation, we already have road access. It's fairly large road. This is Western Avenue. What you're looking at here on the north end of this picture is, um, the solar panels from the Adessa Carvana, uh, site, the south side of their site. So you're, this is Western Avenue traveling north into, um, Framingham from Sherborne. And there's a road that goes back in here. And there is quite a bit of space where a potential, um, BES system, substation could potentially be, uh, be placed. So Sherborne needs to be prepared and we need a bylaw because we, 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 we certainly, um, feel as though they're, Sherborne could be ripe for something like this. The other aspect is, do we want to encourage something like this? Because there could be some potential, um, you know, revenue exchange at a town for a system like this. So with that said, that was about the quickest overview that you give. This will be kind of informative and be at least a start of a talking point or at least a thinking point for, um, for, uh, our next steps. I'll stop sharing right now and we could always go back to it if, if I need to go back to a specific slide with, if anybody had any specific questions.
Thank you, Frank. I, um, that was helpful and it was, I know we talked about it briefly last fall. But it, now that we've kind of, when we, when you get a chance to read the response from the attorney general's office and then with that in mind and thinking ahead of what, um, you know, we have a number of homework items on our plate, um, to tackle once we get through town meeting and thinking about, you know, the new, and we have a, a new group of, um, kind of a full board after the election to work on things. Um, I think you are right, Frank, that working on that is one, one area that we should, um, add to our to-do list. Um, does anyone have any questions for Frank or at this point? I mean, it's still kind of, it's just a informative.
Uh, can I, uh, interject a second?
Go ahead, Leonard.
Um, I was curious. It seems to me that, uh, this is an operation, a, a process that I'd love to participate in if it's possible. I volunteer my services to the town. Um, I've got some background in electrical engineering and some background in planning. And I think I would like to participate in this if it's a feasible opportunity.
I think that sounds wonderful, Leonard. I think we would definitely, you know, keep you, um, keep you informed on when this is coming up and, um, would love to have your assistance. Um, definitely nice to have as many creative minds and smart minds on, when we're tackling these issues to come up with things from all angles. Um, so thank you.
It just seemed to me that it was a good fit to my background. And I've got, I haven't done anything else for the town, so I thought I'd do that. Good idea.
Thank you. I've seen you at meetings throughout the years, Leonard. So I know that's not true that you haven't done anything, but, um, thank you for chiming in now and we will definitely take you up on that.
Sorry to interrupt, but yeah, go ahead. I'm done.
Steph, did you have a comment on?
Yeah, um, I heard Heidi say in her introduction a little bit about, um, concerns about leaks and, um, you know, sort of infiltration following an event like a fire. Um, and Frank, please pardon me if I missed part of this, but I don't think I saw an aspect of that in the, in the PowerPoint, um, specifically about containment or any, um, water, groundwater quality. So I'm, I'm just sort of speaking as a, you know, as the planning board's liaison to the groundwater protection committee. Um, I know that the, and I, it looks like Frank's going to reach out and show me exactly what I did miss.
No, no. The, I, I do want to say that in, in answering that question, it's, it's virtually impossible at this point to, to ask, answer that because it depends on the type of storage, uh, unit that is used. If they use one of these four mechanical devices, then there is no, you know, other than that they may need to be lubricated, there might be a little bit of noise because you have moving parts. Um, there, there's less danger to the environment. Electrochemical like lead acids are going to be, you know, uh, a much bigger issue. You know, can you think about, um, the, the old fashioned batteries in your car? We still have them, the 12 volt, uh, lead acid batteries that, that we have in our car that we need to replace every so often. And, you know, whether they be ICE cars or EV cars. Um, that, that would be obviously a bigger concern if something would happen to them. And certainly I would imagine that the redundancies would have to be put in, in place differently than if you had a mechanical system and/or for that matter, even a lithium-based system. But there are these other types of system, you know, um, Ni-Cads and, and other types of, uh, battery systems you see in electrochemical. And, um, you know, so there are these variety of different types. And I think depending on which one a developer would use, we would then have to become more knowledgeable on that to make sure that the developers meeting the requirements for that. Or as we put the bylaw into place that we look into each of those and have to have a, um, you know, a specific section for each one of them. And, uh, for.
I, I, yeah, I was, I was going to suggest if, if there's a bylaw to be written, that it would be a, maybe a good idea to identify what, which, which systems present risks that the town, that are too great for the town, right? And, and see if we can not allow or exclude certain types due to certain risk factors. I don't really know exactly if there are constraints on that. And I guess I just wanted to offer that the groundwater protection committee works as an advisory committee to all of the elected and appointed boards. And so if there was a request to do some homework, um, you know, you know, obviously we, it sounds like there's, I love the idea of, of Leonard, uh, volunteering for part of this too. But, uh, GPC is also at your disposal if you should have any, um, questions that you would want answered.
That's, that's awesome. Because even if you look at a system like this and you can see that the, uh, this is on a pretty nice cement slab and, um, you know, the enclosure are, are pretty well self-contained. You know, but it's when, when those catastrophic, um, events happen that, uh, that they stop looking at this pretty. And, you know, containment, um, is broken and issues happen. So definitely is, um, a concern to look carefully at that.
Marion has her hand raised, but just before she said, I think it was with you, Rob, that, um, you mentioned that MIT was working on alternatives to lithium, which lithium seems to be the most risk that we're aware of, um, just given the, the fire. But, um, something about a solid-state battery that. the fire, but um something about a solid state battery that um could be effective. And I mean, it sounds like that's, I guess, the challenge of all of these things that we run into trying to develop um bylaws for technology that's flexible for technology that's changing.
Yeah, um, I haven't done much research into this, although I'd be interested in um participating and doing some more. And my understanding from just the little bit I've done is that they um you know, lithium ion batteries are sort of the the practical economical energy storage at these kinds of like sort of substation scale um applications. And they do um their uh batteries in a car have to be optimized for weight and volume. And um, they don't really have that concern for these. So they use a somewhat different chemistry. I think I think they typically use the same kind of lithium iron phosphate chemistry. That if you um, if you carry around one of those little jumper packs for your car that uh can jumpstart a dead battery, that's typically that technology, which is about um, it's about half as efficient as the uh as the ones that are used for powering electric vehicles. So it takes twice as much weight of batteries to get a given amount of energy storage. But um they're somewhat more stable and they're somewhat supposedly somewhat safer. But you know, there's still a lot of energy packed into these steel cans and um I, you know, my understanding is that, you know, um, there's a couple layers of protection there. There's an electronic system that if it, you know, senses a fault, it shuts things down. There's um some kind of inert or quite gas quenching systems that if it is like started the overheating process, but like now and then they do completely run away and um it is a problem then and it's, they're very difficult to extinguish. Um, so um, there's some concerns, but I don't know. My understanding is that the the other the alternative non battery technologies are just um probably not practical at the scale of uh working in a solar plant right now. So that um if they really are going to be required for grid stability and you, you know, you can't make use of the solar power without having a certain amount of battery accompanying it. Then um my guess is the the state is not gonna allow the town to ban them entirely. And we're just gonna have to make sure that the the technology is the safest available and that our um our first responders are trained in how to react to it.
Thanks, Rob. Marion, what would you add?
Well, yeah, thanks. I just want it to ask a question to Frank or ask for some more information at a future meeting, maybe. Um, you mentioned that there is a a battery installation going in or approved in Medway?
Yes.
Sure, that's not the only town around Boston or Massachusetts that has one. I think uh, I'd like to know a lot more about the specs of that installation and how Medway came to the decision to allow it and what bylaws they have and all the sort of local knowledge that was built up in the approval of that array.
That that's a good point. And I I think at the the original meeting, I also suggested that we we start by looking at Medway's bylaw because they they are one of the first ones that have come up with a bylaw. They are one of the first in the state. Not the first, but one of the first in the state that's working with this and certainly one that's close to us. And you saw the picture of Nantucket. I've never seen that, but I that's a a picture of that uh that that system. So I see that it's there. But when I went um to the um mass dot gov website and and put in B E S S and battery energy storage and so on. Um, that was the town that a lot of, a lot of what I was searching for brought me back to the to the Medway site. So certainly a place to get a little bit more information from and then to see if subsequently any other systems are being put into place or being considered and what processes that they're going through.
So Steph Harris has um posted in the chat a link from the town of Web- Medway's website, their um their town website under Planning and Economic Development Board. Um, which I guess goes through a little bit of the process on approving uh the battery energy storage system.
It also notes that they have an energy resource zone zoning district in their town, probably just for this.
So it looks like there's there's again further homework for us to work on. Um, Mary Moore, you had something to say?
Thanks, Addie May. Yeah, I just, um, first, I appreciate Frank's um review, even though it was quick. It was super helpful to understand and and to sort of pay attention to this sort of stuff. And I wonder if maybe there isn't um a useful exercise to sort of talk to towns who are on, you know, public or private water and private septic to sort of see what they're thinking about with this, in addition to looking at published stuff like what you're seeing with Medway. Um, but it might be useful just to reach out to a couple of communities that sort of look more like us in terms of private water to see what they're thinking about because um obviously it's gonna, you know, it it's a useful thing to have this battery management, but managing it is gonna be tricky for towns like us. So just want to thank Frank for the useful review. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Um, well, I think we definitely that kind of I want I want to circle back to kind of the planning board and next steps. If we're okay, if everyone's okay with moving on from the battery energy storage topic for the moment, um, I wanted to just kind of move on to the agenda item for the uh multifamily overlay district. Is that anyone have been okay with that? Um, and just do an update and I feel I'll have Heidi give us the update of kind of where we're at. I mean, we all are aware, we pulled the article from this town meeting as we've discovered that we had some homework that we needed to do. And um so we're somewhat starting um a little bit of a kind of a fresh perspective, taking into account that there were changes to the bylaw that the state made after we had finished our completed our technical assistance with our consultants. But Heidi, if you want to give us the update on where we're next steps in schedule?
Sure. So our our current status, as Addie May said, is we have a zoning bylaw that has little, some questions. Um, we also had a plan that we submitted that has not been approved by the E O H L C. Not a lot of issues, but there but there are some issues. And then also we have the historic district, which has in society, which has come forward and said they have concerns with the lots that have been chosen. And we've had the neighbors that would like to be included in the lots and it just, we just haven't been ready. And I kind of wanted to pull back a little bit. Some way we'd like to start from fresh. We never had, from what I could tell, any community engagement involved in the planning of this district, where a lot of the towns that have been successful in passing it have started out with mapping sessions and talking with residents. I mean, I reached out to one of the people whose parcels was included and asked if they had been asked and were informed about it. And they said they hadn't. They said part of theirs land was mentioned that it was gonna be included, but then they saw that another part of it was that no one had ever had talked to about what it would mean for their property. So I I really felt for us to try and be successful is I think we have to be better ambassadors here in the town. And one of the first steps would be to try and hold a community meeting probably in June before everyone goes away on vacation um to do a mapping exercise, like some of the other towns that have had success, where we invite the residents to come in, have them come and see and play with maps, see if we put a certain parcel in, what does that do? You know, if you don't use this area, what areas can you use? And even ask for people how they see things would fit. And if people have more of a participation, I think they will have again a better understanding and hopefully come to some more agreement as to why we're choosing certain areas that fit with what the law says. Um, so in order to do that, that takes money. And what we've been trying to look at is we had initial technical assistant grant, which was spent, but we now have a product from that, which is not ready for prime time. So that product has to be redone. Try to ask the state for some more money. They are probably gonna give us some more, but not the full amount to do the whole project. Uh, we did have a grant for community outreach, but that grant doesn't cover the technical assistance portion. So what I'm trying to do is break out the mapping sessions and as community outreach to use the community outreach grant for those initial parts. And then try to get the state grant to work on our zoning bylaw and the remaps that get created hopefully this summer. Um, I had talked with the E O H L C head people there um who have said we can resubmit an application. They're willing to review a new one. They will not look for amendment on existing one, but we would start our ninety day time limit again once upon submission. But that would give us feedback. So timeline, I was talking with Addie May's, if we could do our outreach, come up with a plan this this summer, in September, do a public hearing, present to people and maybe another submission to the E O H L C. That would give us the ninety days of getting approval at the end of December with January being ready, hopefully having an approved plan and give us in time to talk and be prepared for town meeting in the spring. Um, so the first step is that we would need to get a pro- proposal, which I do have, and I'm gonna ask Addie May to share. I just got one in today from a group that was recommended from Mass Housing Partnership. Um, I would like to try a different consultant group because I do feel there were some issues with the consultant group that we had. Uh, and to see if we can get a better program and and a little bit more proactive program. Um, so this group is called uh I'm kind of blank on the name, is Community Scale. And they are putting a proposal forward for they'll do some background analysis on what were our passwords. They will conduct a community workshop for us and and they will also get some district mapping done. And um Addie May, if you want to screen share, the cost for this would be five thousand dollars. We still have about sixteen to seventeen thousand dollars left in our outreach grant, so it would come from our outreach grant.
Um.
It was what I just sent you this afternoon.
I know, I had it. And then I guess email is is the threads where it's like combining all emails from you.
Oh, I, yeah.
Separate for some reason.
Okay. Let me see if I can send it to you again.
Uh, can you share on your screen?
I don't have my emails loaded up on this screen and I'm still too new to hosting Zoom. Sorry.
I know you did send it to me. Why? Where is that email? All right, let me see if I can find it. Okay, Community Scale. Um, I've got it.
Okay.
Just get it uh open.
And today they've also sent a proposal over to the Mass Housing Partnership um for fifteen thousand dollars to redo our whole application, the bulk of what was done before. We'll work, we'll see what amount of money they'll give us. Thank you. Yes.
Um. So this is, this is basically, this is kind of like when we did the process with the housing production plan where you have, um, you know, we'd have a, we'd publicize a forum. And well, Community Scale would would review where we're at and see what some of the feedback is and some of the issues and get to know Sherborne a little bit. And then this community workshop here where we would have people um and I guess now we could, we did it, um, the housing production was done at the community center, but now we have the lovely community space, community hall at the library. Um, but to get as many people engaged in thinking about the issues, a lot of people are hearing about it, which is always helpful because it is in the news with the M B T A zoning and um it helps with the process of getting to town meeting, the more people that hear about this early and any, you know, we get to learn what questions, what concerns, um, things come up. So so I think this is the goal and I believe that this does fall under the way that this is, the the intent of this should fall under the the outreach engagement category. And so it would um be a separate standalone. As stated, there's a the budget that they have is um five thousand inclusive of everything. Um, and we do have those funds in the outreach, public outreach grant that was received last year. So um, I think we probably should take a vote if everyone's in agreement that this is a good use of spending those outreach funds. Um, if everyone's okay, I'll stop sharing just so that I can see see everyone on the screen.
Steph has her hand raised too.
Yes, yes.
Um, yeah, I was just curious, uh, just looking at the proposal, um there's not, I, it's not a company that I've heard of before. So I was just wondering if they have a background and a full understanding of chapter three A, because I feel like it's so complex that I just you know, a lot of outreach firms could offer services like community building and workshops, but do they have that background?
Yes, they were actually presented to us from M H P. Um, and they're working with some other towns and it, and they've actually been working a lot in with other towns and there's zoning and rewriting zoning as well in other towns. So um Mass Housing Partnership actually hooked, brought brought them to our attention and said, and suggested that we talk with them.
And technical assistant grants, technical assistance grants come through Mass Housing Partnership. So for them to provide this reference for um the technical assistance. I mean, who Goldson did a wonderful job with the house, the original housing production plan in two thousand and seventeen and then work on other projects, but um sometimes it's just good to change things up and um have a fresh perspective.
Interesting. I I just sort of a personal note, I recognize the name Nels Nelson because it's kind of a unique name. And um he worked at my company until October twenty twenty three. And his title on LinkedIn is co-founder and principal of Community Scale. So it sounds like um he left my company to uh, I don't, I don't know him, but I was just
Okay.
It's just a personal, interesting.
I'll be like a lot of things uh where there's an opportunity, there's um, you know, things things, people change, things uh, things, people take advantage. It's gonna be a lot of people, a lot of, every town has to, not every town, but there's a lot in the Commonwealth that have to comply. So Frank, did you have something?
Yeah, one of the things that I I feel is an important big initial part of this is before we even have the uh the workshop is just to make sure again that people understand what this is and what it is that we're we're calling them to. Um, so I think there therein lies a little bit of education. I think we, that needs to be thought of as part of the process of the actual workshop. You know, if we just call it a workshop on, you know, three A or a workshop on, you know, zoning districts in, we're we're not really gonna get anybody. And I think one of the things that got people out to our hearings was the the outreach that we did, especially to certain communities. And they were well represented, but not necessarily the rest of the town was overly well represented. So you know, how many people in the rest of the town know what this really is? So I think to be effective that and I just want to make sure that that five thousand dollars could still be some education, but education to to draw people also to the with the workshop because they they would see that even though they wouldn't be affected, that they have a vested interest in the outcome of of this work.
Good point.
I think that's a, yeah, I think that's a good point. And I'm actually hoping to attend one of Jeremy's coffee houses or open houses that he's holding to have a flyer or something on three A. And if we do get something scheduled, have that be a place where we could promote it as well. And get it out to maybe the C O A, ask them to help spread the word. But I do think, I agree, Frank, I think we need to do a better job of education.
Go ahead, Steph.
Sorry, um, the la- the last thing is that when you flashed the proposal up on the screen, I think I saw a billing rate of about two hundred dollars an hour. And five thousand dollars divided by two hundred dollars an hour is only about twenty four hours of time. And so I guess my concern would be, is that enough, right? Like, if you assume that at least two people will be at a workshop, you know, and there's, there's eight hours right there of just like being present in person. So that's a third of their whole scope is just showing up at the workshop, right? And so then the other sixteen hours, is that enough to get value? Um, five thousand dollars when you first said it seemed a little low to me. So that's my knee jerk reaction.
It's just. Well, this this scope was just for this workshop. So we, we, we wanted to hold a workshop. We didn't do such a thing um, previously, and so we did break it out and say, okay, to hold a workshop, what is needed? So again, that scope is. That scope does not take care of the other, the other technical assistance that we need to do.
Understood, yeah, it's like, but I, when I hear Frank talking about outreach and stuff like that, like there's some good messaging that I think that like, if time allows, like. Uh, I, I, yeah, okay.
Let's add that. It's, it, there's, I expect there will still be some um, further funds left in this advocacy group, um. I guess pot, if you will, that we received from the grant. And we will then have, as we progress through. We'll identify, okay, how how else can we get the word out? Once we have more by law language, once we have some things that need to be reviewed, then um, there will be. Work that needs to be done and we can determine the best way to get that information out, but um, this scope was was pretty narrowly tailored just to getting because of the time crunch, looking at. Um, with the needing to have everything somewhat in place for a ninety day review by September. So um. Yes, it was, it was the preparation work just for the kind of one night workshops and then of course, hopefully. Finding a creative way to actually entice people to show up.
And and Steph, they do have a fifteen thousand dollar proposal in with M H P to do the rest of our work. That wouldn't come from our money, that comes directly from M H P to this company.
The technical.
Yep. So I I guess I would ask for. A vote on the board if they approve this. If it's approved, I will get it to Jeremy for him to sign off. On.
Um, is there a motion to approve the expenditure for a uh, public outreach workshop on multifamily zoning? Sometime in June.
So moved.
Second.
You've been seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, um, I am, I, Addie May Weiss, uh, Robert Wolf.
Hi.
Will Dunham.
Hi.
And Frank Hook.
Hi.
Thank you. So motion passes. Heidi, if you'll take care of getting that for signature and uh, following up and then working on a date schedule.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Um. Okay, so that. There, the other item is a heads up on, um, I believe it was, just wanted to mention the the tree. The tree, uh, that we will need to schedule a tree hearing. Um. That'll, it'll get posted two weeks in advance, but we're not at that stage yet. The um, just like we did in two thousand seventeen, I know Will was part of that. Um, I don't believe anyone else was on the board at that time. But they, there, the ever sources. Come up with a list. Some of the trees are on the public right of way in on a scenic road, along Farm Road. The tree warden is going to be reviewing each of the trees on the list in the public right of way. And um, will be in. We'll have a joint hearing and where um, to fulfill the requirement under the. Um, Scenic Road Act as well as the tree warden has an obligation to comply with the um. Just uh, shade tree. Um. Here, um, public to shade tree requirements to to evaluate, so. Brain dead, so. Um, so I don't have too much else to say on that except for that, uh, just to make sure that everyone is aware that that is coming up because um. I'm sure you've seen some of the trees along Farm Road as you drive back and forth that are, they have a blue ribbon around them. And um. Just to make sure that. Nothing is imminent at the moment, um. If for some reason someone on Farm Road has someone's, a tree group show up and start trying to take a tree down. Um, at this point, that is, we have not held the hearing and so no trees should be taken down unless it's on someone's private property. Are there any questions about that?
One thing I'd like to. Mention that uh, we might want to consider, uh, maybe Frank and I should be taking a look at it. Is um. You know, part of the. Part of the town's plan is that we would like to eventually extend the sidewalk along that road. That um. Doesn't serve out as far as we'd like. And um. Is if they're going to be taking all the utility poles out, are they all? Is it, you know, absolutely a done deal that they're all going to be replacing them exactly in place? Or, and you know, with all these trees going, is there anything that's going to? Possibly could be done differently that would help. Uh, eventually put a sidewalk in.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, definitely a question to look into. I don't know the answer um. On, you know, utility poles and where their limits are as far as where they can be placed. Um. Definitely some oddball locations along Farm Road at the moment and pre-existing and if they are being moved, um, I'm assuming. That's a good question and and Rob, I welcome you to take a look and um. Bring it back to the board and certainly feel free to reach out and ask the question of um. You can, you're welcome to reach out directly to Public Works and ask if there are any, if there's a, any knowledge on uh. Utility poles and planning for locating utility poles with the in anticipation of potential future sidewalks. I don't know. Um. I know. Number of years ago. Millis along one fifteen. They redid all sorts of sidewalks and they had utility poles right in the middle of the sidewalk. For a good stretch and then eventually later on, the utility company went back and moved, re-redid the poles in it for a while. It just looked really dumb, but. Unfortunately, probably things don't schedule to your line up.
Yeah, there's a choke point there that would make it probably very difficult to make a really continuous sidewalk. All the way out, so. Okay.
Um. I guess kind of to that point, I know, I think Frank, you had brought up to Heidi's attention and 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 just kind of looking at the agenda and thinking ahead. Um, and I think as a board, it is very valuable to be thinking, we haven't, we we've discovered over the past year that there are a number of um. I know. Housekeeping issues that we should be looking at in our zoning bylaws. Some were brought to our attention by the. Uh, building inspector. Um, there's been other issues that have come up just as we've been working through various bylaw issues that come up. Um. And so I I welcome everyone before the next meeting to. Start create kind of a running list of things that you. Or not even necessarily before the next meeting, but start kind of. Compiling a list of things that you kind of you're aware of, that maybe we've forgotten of things that we said, oh gee, that we should come back and revisit that and just. You know, we can't tackle everything, but if we had some kind of a list. And frequently had a chance to evaluate the list and say, okay, is this still, do we, you know, want to change the order? Do we want to? What's a priority? Has priorities changed? But just to kind of give us a goal point to be working on things, um. I think it would be, it it, Frank's suggestion is valuable, so um. I don't know, Frankie, you want to add to that since I I know you brought that up and brought that forth?
Yeah, no, I I think you hit the nail on the head. Uh, I don't know, um, what the the right. Process for doing it is, whether whether if we all bring the ideas and we do a brainstorming session and. Try to create maybe visually, remember that um, that spreadsheet we had set up for the complete streets prioritization plan? You know, it could be something along that line where. We we start to look at, okay, what are some of the things that we want to do? Then we can start to get some more data about some of those things like how much it could cost, how, what it would affect. And then we can start looking at. Um, costs versus um. You know, a a effect to our community, our impact to our community, our benefit to our community and the thing that had the highest benefit for the slow lowest amount of money. Lowest amount of cost within, you know, rise to the higher priorities and, you know, we just kind of go down and. Uh, and then on top of that, the things that we just need to do and we need to stay focused on and that we have a calendar for that, so. You know, it could, it could look, it could look like it's a couple different uh, ways of doing it, different different ways of handling that. Um, but I, I don't know, does a brainstorming session once everybody brings some of the those items to the table makes sense to do that we have that as a. Agenda item.
I think that's a a good idea, um. And I I guess that kind of brings it to the next question, um. Town meeting is the twenty-third of April, which is a Tuesday, which is when we we usually do Tuesday meetings. Um. The next meeting that is on, uh, because we, planning board meets the first and third. Tuesday of the month, the next, the third Tuesday of the month would be the sixteenth, which falls in the middle of. School vacation week, um. And I'm actually trying to get my parents to. The city to see their grandbaby and um, so all of a sudden it's a little bit of a challenge for me. If if uh, if it's the only date that works, then um, we'll make it happen, but I didn't know what other people thought about. The timing of the next meeting, um. Other than town meeting, I don't. Believe we have anything pressing. But maybe I'm forgetting something other than we do have the tree hearing, but I don't know that there, the tree hearing would be, we'd have to post it for two weeks anyway, um. And I don't know if we're at that, so I don't know, I guess my question is, is. Is April thirtieth a viable option or is there a reason that we really need to stick to? April sixteenth and actually Heidi, I'll let you be the first to kind of, because I um. Again, I may be forgetting something.
Well, I I just think if we do April thirtieth, then we're meeting the next week again on May seventh. And I don't think we have. That much new items, plus I think we're going to be getting new members on that. Do you want to just skip a week? I know that you have skipped a week in the summer, but I don't, I'm. I'm new here, so I don't know what your routine is on it, but. I don't see you have anything pressing. We're set for the town meeting. And I don't know if there's anything that needs to be meeting on the sixteenth.
Um. We were talking about having a handout. You were looking at putting this this slide presentation together. I don't know if any of that you'd like to. Have the board review prior to. The town meeting on the twenty-third.
Um. Yes, and my thoughts are I could handle that without it being a full-blown planning board meeting since it's really your. My, you know, my fellow planning board members input that I'm looking for, that I could create something and share it and um. You can share feedback. To. Heidi, can I? Get individual feedback? One and one or no, I can't.
No, because then they consider chain, it'd be like a chain, you know, that um, and if it was just skip. What about? Um, April, the Thursday, April eleventh, if there's just a short meeting to review the handout and the presentation.
Um.
Select, select board won't be meeting this, meeting this week, so they won't be meeting on the eleventh. I don't know if that's an option for people.
Should work for me.
And just do the eleventh and just the only agenda item is to um. Just quickly review, I can share ahead of time the handout and that, and then in the open session, we can get any feedback. Is that, would, are we able to? Get a quorum, is there myself, Rob and one other person?
I can be there. If it's at seven or.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, if I, um, if everyone's okay, that would probably be the the best. Mechanism for the April eleventh. And uh, so that would be a Thursday, next week, next Thursday. Um.
Yeah.
And do seven o'clock and. Prior to that meeting, I will share um, kind of my script and. My proposed script and the um. Handout and then that'll give everyone some time to review and um, share feedback. So I think that's, that's a good plan and then take off. Not have a meeting during the the school vacation week, if that's okay with everyone.
The um, brainstorming session, I uh, I think be important. I I don't want to add extra work to to Will's um. Already busy agenda, but um. Certainly like to hear what what things that you feel, feel and felt were needed. That we should keep on uh, keep in the mind for uh, for for some of the work that we need to do. So you you have a long history and um. And a good understanding of uh, the history of the planning board and uh. And current and current as well as uh, future needs of our town, so. You know, we would like to hear what what you have to uh, to add to that. I don't know when when we should could do that, whether that's the thirtieth or the seventh. Because the election isn't that till the May, the the one after that, right? The the election is the fourteenth.
Um.
That I'm trying to look up.
That's correct. The election is the fourteen.
I, I guess I'm kind of thinking brainstorming, um. That could be just as kind of more as like, even if you have one or two bullet points that stick out in your mind as something that, oh gee, we we talked about it, but we never came back to. X issue. And if you even just in an email, shoot it off to Heidi and then she. Start, puts it all in a folder and we start then compiling a list of all the things that we said, okay, these are these. Outlying things that, you know, housekeeping that, some of them are, some of them purely are housekeeping like. Uh, you know, it's a drawing or a word or something that just was odd. Um, or outdated and some things are, okay, these are bigger issues that we didn't get a chance to address that we should put on our goals and objectives. Um, so I don't. Yeah, and then as when we kind of start prioritizing, that'll be more of a brainstorm session, but I think in the interim. Right now, I think it's more of a matter of just. Kind of what are the things that we've been bogged down with? Kind of fighting fires that we've forgotten about if um, you know, little things, if you just shoot it off in an email and. Put in the subject line, you know, planning board goals or planning board. Um. To-do list, uh, and just kind of start creating a a list of things that maybe have come up. That each of us have kind of recall.
You want to have the May seventh be an in-person one since it'll be Will's last one that we can all.
Yeah.
Wish him well.
And May seventh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I. I agree with with what Frank's saying though, because I think Will was looking at some specific aspects of the of the. Not only the zoning bylaws, but maybe the rules and regs, and I just don't want the board to lose that because um. He does bring a lot of expertise in terms of how these things are. Put together, so have been put together over the years and would have value moving forward. Um. I guess I'm specifically thinking of there were some farm events, rules and regs. Changes that you had specifically penned out and I don't think that they were ever sent out to, or they they weren't sent out to an email that I was on. Um, and I just don't want to lose any, the work that you've done.
Yeah, I'm happy to try to manage that knowledge transfer however makes the most sense.
Okay.
I wonder if maybe it would be. Just easier to to put it in writing, just so.
Sure.
Better preserve that way. I I don't, I don't think I have anything. So that valuable unfortunately, but I do have some thoughts on that topic, topic in particular, so I I'm glad to put down. Everything I have maybe in a list and I can. Maybe run it by Heidi, discuss it with her. Um, just to make sure that she's clear on it. I think that's maybe. A way to do it.
I think that sounds like a good plan, um, and definitely, yeah, if you're, if you're able to kind of share Will some of your thoughts and then and um, make sure Heidi has them and. You know, kind of like a lot of things, trying to create one central. Folder of of information and things so that we have information in one place, um, is ideal. So we can all recall it and that, yeah, as we move on to. Having new members join the board, um. And you know, eventually changes will happen and. New, you know, there's always new members, so it's nice to have that continuum and that history to keep working towards.
And then as far as other like significant items in the coming weeks, I think that um, probably would be warranted as a discussion of the uh, Attorney General's. The the letter that Heidi just sent out today. I don't know when, but I also don't want to lose that thread.
No, I think the May seventh might. No, I think the May seventh might be a good meeting time.
So, um, so, so as far as meetings, in the future meetings, April eleventh will be Zoom and we will just review, um, kind of a, hopefully not terribly long, just a quick meeting to just get feedback and review the handout and and a script and how it'll be presented for the multifamily zoning bylaw updates. And then, um, May seventh will be the, um, I guess our first meeting in May. And we will do that in person at town hall. It'll be nice to see everyone's faces in person.
Are you going to be able to be there for that, Will?
Yeah, on May seventh, yes.
Um, and I guess as far as the technology goes, um, I guess we will.
Well, I said, there was some new, new microphone there and something else. So maybe we can test, this will give us a couple of weeks to test it out and maybe have a hybrid scenario by, uh, May seventh.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, are there any other items that we did not discuss that needed to be addressed tonight?
I don't know if there's an item that needs to be discussed, but I just would like to have an update if, if this could be categorized under, uh, reports with other, um, committees is how the, um, uh, the roundabout, uh, progress is looking and if it's still on schedule to start in mid-June with that project.
Uh, to my knowledge, we are still you know, on track for that to, um, proceed. Um, some materials have started to be ordered. First, you know, the granite curving being the biggest hurdle to obtain. And that when we had kind of looked at it a year ago, when we didn't have all the funding lined up and we were told it's taking six months to get granite curving in. So, um, that has been initiated. Um, and otherwise, yeah, it's a, you know, forge ahead and it, the expectation is that yes, this summer that is happening.
Excellent.
All right. So I guess hearing nothing further, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And seconded?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning, uh, planning board meeting for tonight, um, at eight fourteen PM, Addie May Weiss is I. Rob Wolf?
Hi.
Frank Hook?
Hi.
Will Dunham?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. And thanks again for, uh, your willingness to, to do April eleventh. So I will get my homework done ahead of that time.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.